Thank you for coming tonight for Wareham Zoning Board Appeal for tonight's agenda, August 23, 2023. It is 6:30 PM and we are at Room 320 at the Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I want to call the meeting to order, make a roll call. My far left, Mr. Richard Semple; my far right, Mr. Troy Larson, Associate Member; regular member, Mrs. Veronica Devenez; Actored Jim Akabachi; myself, the Chair, Nazir Al-Khulasi; also present, our Building Commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner, as well as Town Planner, Mr. Ken Buckland. Before we start, we have the minutes, 8:00, 9:23.
I reviewed those online. They're good. Making motions accept as presented.
Motion by, second by Richard. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Before we go further, anyone here for Angela McKeown? For 3127, 386 Main Street, right? That's okay. You could say, but anybody here from the neighbors? Are you here? You want to continue this? May I counsel her?
I'm sorry.
All right. Want to come forward so the neighbors don't have to wait? You want to come forward so the neighbors don't have to wait?
Do you want to continue? Who is that one?
All right, 21-23 for 386 Main Street. Public hearing still open. State your name, Counselor.
Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street.
Okay, and you would like to continue till when?
Next meeting, which I believe is September 13.
9/13? You're looking for 9/13?
9/13.
Okay. Ma'am, the public hearing is going to be continued till September 13. You will not be notified, so make sure you show up if you'd like to speak. All right. So can I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Motion to continue 21-23 till September 13. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Continued. Anyone here for Pinehurst? For 84 Pinehurst?
You're out there for that?
It's a neighbor.
Okay.
That's been withdrawn.
No. There's a withdrawal letter?
They withdrew. Yeah, we got a letter.
All right, so we have a, the applicant has to be, to withdraw the application, okay? So can I get a motion not withdraw without prejudice?
So moved.
So motion to withdraw that case, what is it, 23-23, to withdraw without prejudice? Any discussion on the, without prejudice?
It's being withdrawn. It's being withdrawn. They're not canceling the project. They found a by right approach to their project. They don't need us.
Okay, so...
Second, I think.
Second? All right, second by Veronica. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye. Cancelled. For the record, Mr. Jake Morrison walked in. It is 6:37 PM. All right, we go to 55-21, Mannix. Request for minor modification for 238 and 240 Sandwich Road, map 133 lot 1100A and 1101A Crossroad Care Center. Name and address for the record, sir, Counselor.
Hi, Peter Titlebaum, Attorney, 30 Oaks Street, Wareham.
Fred Mannix, 122 Lakeshore Drive, Wayland.
All right, so what bring you here today?
Well, as you know, and I'm sure you recall, after lengthy, arduous hearings back at the end of 2021, we issued a special permit and zoning variances to my client here for his project at 238 and 240 Sandwich Road. He had applied for intermediate care center facility, and that's what's in the decision here. COVID has really done a lot of things to change that industry. It's made it very hard to hire people. It has delayed construction. And in fact, when we're, when we're done with this portion, we would ask for your extension on the existing permit regardless of whether you decide tonight whether it's major or minor in terms of the modification. So given the difficulties inherent in trying to get one of these intermediate care facilities going, built, and up in operation, my client has decided to see if he can shift course here. And what he's looking to do is change the use to senior over 55 apartments from the current intermediate care facility designation. He's asking to do it as a minor modification. We sent out, not in addition to our request, and I hope you all got to see it, we did send out a revised traffic study, so you would have that in hand to perhaps assist you in making the determination tonight. We would argue that it's a minor modification because, first off, the traffic doesn't really change. Secondly, my client is unusual in terms of seeking modification in the first place in that he's looking to reduce the scope of the project significantly in terms of the height of the building. Going back and reviewing the hearings before you issued the permit, height was a huge problem. We know that it was, it was bandied back and forth. People in the neighborhood were concerned about it. People on the board were concerned about it. And so my client is looking to cut a full floor off of the proposed four-story building, bring it down to three stories. He's still looking to retain the solarium. That wasn't just something that would go with intermediate care. That would go with an apartment setting for seniors as well, to give them a gathering place in the wintertime that was sunny, so they could enjoy the sunshine. So tonight, really, we're just looking for an answer from the board on the threshold question of, are we coming in for a minor modification or a major modification? And so we would ask for a vote on that. We would also ask for a vote on a year extension regardless of whether you view it as minor or major. COVID-related, again, it's been hard to get anything built, so we would hope that that wouldn't be a problem for you. I'm going to turn it over briefly to my client here so that he can just discuss in a little bit more detail what he's proposing now that's different from what you permitted previously.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as my attorney points out, it was a long process. We designed an awful lot of things during that, that time period. And I still love the building. My proposal has nothing to do with change in the building at all except to make it smaller. The other, the other thing we want to do is keep the solarium concept and the gathering concept that was built into this in the first place. It's, it's funny. It was mentioned at the time, could I take a floor off? And I, I wasn't too sure I could. Now I feel that I can if I make this elderly housing. It's the same concept. There'd be elderly people living there. It was always a, an intermediate care center with people, you know, living in. It wasn't a, wasn't a hospital. It wasn't a nursing home. It was intermediate care. And we anticipated the residents would be there for quite some time into the Indian intermediate care. The paradigm has changed. People are very wary about concrete housing, that kind of living. Even assisted living is having a problem because there's a lot of people involved in, in a building. COVID has scared everybody. Aging in place has become the new issue. And this building is certainly adapted to aging, aging in place. If you recall some of the, some of the earlier iterations of it, we have very large bathrooms already built into the plan. We have areas to gather. Basically, I don't have to change anything. What I did to cut the units down, besides taking the floor off, was we combined substantially all one-bedroom units and we took, according to my structure, I was able to take three units and combine them to make two units out of them. That's how I got a few two-bedrooms in. We didn't, we didn't make it. These plans don't reflect any change, exterior change whatsoever. There's some interior change because we, we didn't move petitions even. What we did, if you, if you bear with me for a minute, we, we had a 25-foot structural grid. And we basically took 12 feet from each, each unit in the middle and gave it to the, the one to the left and one to the right, one on either side, which created some two-bedroom units. There were no three-bedroom units in, in the area. There's just two. I don't know what else to say about it. My feeling is that it's a very similar use. It's elderly housing. This is not apartments. This isn't, this isn't something for people under 55. This is for people over 55. And I believe there's some big need in the city, in the town, for elderly housing. There just is. I don't have any hard statistics, but from what I've been told, there's a big waiting list. I don't have anything to present to you right now, but I'm sure we could if we had to. And I'm, I'm assuming that a lot of people in town know, I'm sure Ken knows about the, the situation in town. So anyhow, that's, I don't want to, I don't want to drag this out any longer because I, I know you've got a history with me talking, so I'll try to, I'll try to keep it, I'll try to keep it as brief as I can. But I'd be glad to answer any questions. And I'd like to let you know that we haven't changed anything in the exterior. Everything that we talked about, the, the site plan has not changed. Nothing has changed. Couple of, the ambulance, the ambulance parking spot, if you'll recall, that was an issue. I don't think we need that anymore. But, but things like that, minor changes in, in the parking lot. There'd be no grading change. There'd be none of, none of that. We want to leave the outer building. If you recall, we had a, what we called a maintenance building, and it's, it works in. I'm not so sure if it's needed, but we'd like to keep the configuration the same because that helps, again, I want to refresh your memory. That whole area down here is at the bottom of the Route 28 embankment. And it, it's kind of a, a water gathering spot. And if we, we do what we want to do with our drainage plant, that'll help take away probably a lot of mosquitoes that, that are in that area. And I think that's, that's all I want to say right now unless you have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, it's kind of interesting. We're asking for a change of use. And usually when you talk about a change of use, that usually results in a change of circumstance for the neighborhood. It usually means, you know, there might be more impact of this, less impact of that. In terms of the impacts, and this is, this is what I would ask the board to focus on here when, when determining what to do. In terms of impacts, this is going to be, it's going to be awash pretty much as far as the vehicle trips. That's what the traffic consultant has said. The types of vehicles will change somewhat because if you don't have an intermediate care facility, you don't have the Cintas uniform truck showing up. You don't have the Cisco tractor trailer showing up with supplies for the kitchen. So the trips may be roughly the same, but you're not going to see as many trucks going in there. You're not going to see, for example, maybe the Enos Oxygen truck goes by once a week instead of four times a day for people. So the intensity of the use will be reduced even though the trips will remain the same. And, you know, I would, I would ask the board to look back at what they did in the, in the first permit, which was a long process. It was an involved process. It was an engaged process. You wrote a good decision. And with that in mind, I would ask that you, you trust in the decision and your ability to hear going forward because we're not presenting the, the actual plan per se tonight. We're just asking for a vote. But to have some faith in, in your original decision because it's, it's, it's well-written. It's pretty comprehensive. And if you believe, as we do, that we're not seeking any material changes to what's going on in the neighborhood, it's just strictly internal to the property, then I would hope that you could see that this would be a minor modification. We still have to go through the same process whether it's minor or major. The only difference is the public hearing aspect. And I don't see that going back to public hearing is going to get you any more information than you've already gotten. We know, for example, the first time my client appeared before you, you know, there were neighbors concerned about traffic. Well, it's a state highway. We know, for example, that, that highway can handle thousands and thousands of trips a day. And even the chairman actually indicated that to, to that, that neighbor. That traffic really wasn't a consideration on a state highway. So you're not going to get any more information in a public hearing for that. Where you're not going to increase any negative effects on the neighborhood, I think you can confidently vote this as a minor modification if you so choose. So that's what we're asking for.
All right. I, I do understand the traffic and all this, but the intermediate care was issued a special permit. What you're asking is a variance. It would be a defective permit if we call it a minor modification. It would need a variance because, what do you got? Couple acres there?
Well, is it a variance that we're looking for or is it special permitting? Because that's, you've got special permit authority in the commercial strip zone for anything that has more than five units. So it's not a variance, it's a special permit. So we're still within the confines of the special permit. I mean...
It is a, it is a variance and a special permit and site plan review.
You've got, well, you gave variances for side dimension and height, and we're not seeking to do anything with those.
We give variances for number of units as well. The zoning, you are an MR30. In order to put 60 units, you probably need 60, you need like almost 800,000 square feet.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. We're a C, CS, not MR30.
CS? Of course, it still is. It's 30,000. The first two, you need 45. The same thing applies. But I pass it to the board, see what they say. You're looking for 1,800,000 square feet, and I think you have 200,000 even. How many acres you got? Three?
Roughly two. A little over two.
Yeah, so you have like 90,000, so. But we pass it to the board. I think you need a variance, but let's see what the board says. I'm going to start with board member. I get back to you, Troy, because, because you have a full member. Veronica, what do you think?
I agree. I think this is definitely a variance and it's a major modification, even if we were to move forward under the existing permit, which I don't think we can do.
All right. Jimmy?
I got a whole bunch of questions, no comments. If you're ready for questions.
Let's see, let's hear comments.
As far as, as far as major versus minor, I believe this is a major change.
Okay. Jake?
Nothing at this time.
Richard?
I believe it's a major modification.
Okay. Have you, have you considered going to a LEP?
Well, we've, we've talked about that in the context of, I guess you would say financing more than permitting at this point, if, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah.
We have discussed various options under 40B, including the LEP process.
Jim, what's your questions?
Well, one of my questions, I think I've already figured out. Number of units will be 60?
Yes.
Yeah, they reduce from, I believe we had about 90 units.
You had 85. 85, I just read it. That's what I was trying to...
85, yeah. And there was a memory care thing.
So on your square footage per new layout, your new plan, how many square feet will be, not including closets or, you know, just, how many square feet is a one-bedroom unit?
I believe that units, the gross square footage is 750 square feet. The, if you include closets, we get pretty close to the 650 because the, the bathrooms are 80 square feet. Now, the bathrooms could be made smaller, but that isn't the purpose of it. I think...
That's a one-bedroom?
A one-bedroom, yeah.
So how much is a two-bedroom? How many square feet?
A two-bedroom would be, let's say, seven, probably 1,000, something like that, 1,050. What I've done is taken three, seven times three is 21 basically, and made it into two units. Three units, it'd be about 1,050 per, per two-bedroom. As I explained earlier, we took three units and made into two. So the square footage of three units roughly divided is 1,000 plus for each two-bedroom unit.
You took one unit and you took the square footage from one unit and used half of it for one and half of it for another?
Exactly, 12, 12 feet.
Tomato, tomato, potato, potato.
How many, how many square feet each floor total?
Oh, you had to ask me that. I, I think...
And you, you proposing three stories, right?
Yeah, we, we have these four stories. We're proposing three stories to, to lower it down because the number of units, if, if we go to elderly housing, we, the parking becomes an issue. You need 60 spaces. So we have 60 spaces. And then, as, as I look at it, a facility like that, 60 units, we've, we've looked into, you know, there's all kinds of units around here. There's a lot of units in that range, 25, 35, 50, 60. Assisted living, continuing care, all kinds of stuff that, that you see, like, like All-American. They're, they're all fairly large buildings. They're 100, 100 units or more. You know, intermediate care is the same. A hospital would be the same. Nursing home would be the same. So if we go to elderly housing, our requirements and our, our model is different. So 60 units of elderly housing makes economic sense. It cuts down the, the size of, of the building. I wasn't trying to make a building because, you know, it, just trying to make it taller. I think we had some discussion. On this, on this drawing that I gave you, we kind of cut off the tower. If you recall, we had a tower spire there. So yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to maintain, I'd like to put the tower back in when we make a presentation to whatever we try to do here tonight. I think it would look nicer. As you can see, I did it that way. My architect cut it off, and she didn't want to do it that way. But I, I said, cut it off, because we talked about how it would look without the tower and many, many things. And I think it, it looks nicer. The other thing is, the impact on the, on the visual impact, it would, wouldn't change. It'd be nine, approximately nine or 10 feet taken off of the visual impact. And you still wouldn't see the solarium. The solarium, we did a, we took some recommendations, actually from the board. If you, if you look at the drawings, Jim, I think you're looking at the drawings. If you, if you take the solarium floor and drop it down into the fourth floor, that's what, that's what we've done. Taken the exact same thing that was upstairs. We didn't take a whole, that third floor, you know, the, the fourth floor was removed and the roof floor was dropped in its place.
Yeah, you just cut out the floor.
Cut out a whole floor. And, and nothing's changed. We, we didn't change any of the sight lines. I think we had discussion about the solarium from, from Plymouth Road. We also had the discussion from Route 6. And nothing's changed. We didn't pull it forward. We didn't do any, we didn't make any change to it. It was easier to do, but we wouldn't, we didn't want to change it.
Troy, I'm sorry I missed you, for your comment. Were you here for that permit?
I don't think so.
No, so you don't?
No, I don't, I don't recall.
Do you have any comment right now? You know what's...
Well, from the sounds of it, it sounds like a major modification.
Right. Okay. What do you think?
Well, I, I'm hearing the board, and I'm hearing them leaning in a certain direction. So, and I understand that. I would also, I would ask though, in addition to, you know, your vote on minor versus major, I would, I would ask for a vote tonight if you could to extend out for a year because with COVID and everything else, we're bumping up against a December deadline on the current permit.
Okay.
If that's something you, you would do for us.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate that.
You want a year to make new plans, or do you want a year to put a shovel in the ground?
We want a, no, we didn't hear a year, no. Not a year to make new plans. That's a good question, and I, I know why you said that. No, we had, we had a lot of issues the last time with, with plans and different, different things. That doesn't occur here. We, we're not changing it. If you recall, we had a long and drawn-out affair in the past with the site plan. And the, and none of this, I'm not, I'm not complaining about it. I'm saying it just took a lot, and we, we, we did a lot. None, none of that's changed. The, the turning radius for the, for the fire truck, all that. The ambulance might change because if you recall, Chris Smith, I believe, from the fire department was concerned about the number of ambulance runs that would be done. I think we've, I don't think the number of ambulance runs here would be anywhere near what he was talking about. So that's one plus. But we wouldn't need a dedicated ambulance spot there. We would still, all the other stuff on the site plan, none of that changes. The grading doesn't change. The exterior of the building doesn't change. The look of the building doesn't change.
So you, so...
I wouldn't need, I wouldn't need that much.
You can't get started now because you can't get a contractor, but you will be able to start within a year because you feel you can get a contractor? I mean, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand.
It's not a contractor so much, Mr. Akabachi. It's, it's, the, the idea of creating a, an intermediate care center is, is something that's being discussed all over the country as far as gathering. So I'm not saying that people don't want to do it, but it's taken a long time for people to say, you know, we're going to, we're going to open up a place now and we're going to be exposed to being sued for COVID and putting people together. And as I, as you know, I try to, I try to go with the, to the need. And the need is for people to, you know, age in place. And this, this kind of, this kind of building would adapt itself to that. And of course, the board has to look at it. Whatever you feel I need for permits, I would get them as far as the, as far as...
Here's my, here's my concern. Just, I know I asked a question and you're trying to make the answer as long as possible. So I'm sorry for interrupting you. But here's my concern. So we grant a one-year extension. We're not granting a one-year extension for a change of use.
No.
We're granting an extension for what was previously permitted if we should decide to grant an extension.
Right. It's just an addendum to this permit, 55-21.
So to continue my concern, Wareham has, we have a shitty problem. It's called sewer. Okay? So you've reserved some of the flow going into the sewer treatment plant.
I have.
And somebody might walk in here next week with a plan that could use all the flow that you've reserved, and they could be under construction in three weeks. So you're asking for us, I mean, the sewer plant loves it if you guys reserve flow and they don't have to treat it because then they look like heroes. Everything going into the river is clean. But it's not going to stay that way. There was an article in the newspaper, the state's going to make us increase the size of the sewer treatment plant. In the meantime, you know, we're reserving flow for you that there happen to be other builders ready to get going right now. So a year is, I'm expressing, so that my fellow board member, I'd, I'd have a tendency to say six months and come back and tell us what you've accomplished.
Well, I...
If I was going to grant any extension.
Well, we would, I would appreciate a year. I'd appreciate any extension because I, you know, in, in, as far as sewer flow goes, you know, this, cutting down the size of the project to 60 units would, would be a good thing.
Yeah, those, those 15, those 25 units are going to, absolutely, there's going to be somebody listening tonight that's going to say, they're going to run down to the Sewer Commission tomorrow and say, hey. But they're not released because you still have the extension.
Well, the, you know, this is why we're asking for a minor modification. We're not trying, we're not trying to change the rules. We're asking, the reason it's a minor modification in, in our mind is that all we're asking you to do is change the name of the, the project as to elderly housing versus intermediate care. The actual use of the project isn't really going to change substantially except maybe less ambulance.
Except that they're not going to need the ambulances and they're not going to need tractor trailer trucks in there. So...
Well, it would be a, a diminishment in impact, certainly. Okay? You can't, you can't say that 60 units are more than, than 85 units.
Could be a bigger impact because instead of Cisco showing up with a 45-foot trailer, Star and Sharp and Walmart, and shards can show up with P-pods with six-wheelers and they could clog up the highway because they are fighting over each other. An Amazon truck is parked out there with their blinkers and UPS just crashed into FedEx because we got 60 old people that, you know...
Well, I appreciate...
They, they need assisted living, but they're not getting a nurse. So I don't know. I know, it's a matter of opinion. I, I think it's a major modification. I'd be willing to vote on it being a major and having you come back as a major. I'm not ready to move at a minor. I don't know about the rest of the board.
That's what we're here to ask for. If it's a major modification and that, certainly, I, I'm asking for the time to make the attempt.
Then you're going to need more time, and that's why, that's, goes right back to, and the sewer plant just sits there saying, ah, thank you for reserving our flow. Thank you for taking the pressure off.
Well, so are you, Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could respond a little bit to Mr. Akabachi? As you know, I... As you know, I worked pretty hard on that Littleton Drive project, and one of the things we did with Littleton Drive project was we had access to sewer that had been granted back in the '70s. So for my client to tie it up for six months or a year or something like that, that property had it tied up for 50 years.
Yeah, I know, and people in Europe thought you'd fall off the edge of the earth from before Christ all the way up into the 1640s.
Well, if you're listening to people...
But then, all of a sudden, real quick, they found out that the earth is round. I mean, you know, so that's a good comparison of time, anyway.
Well, I don't know if Kyrie Irving knows about that, but that's a different story.
Let me, Mr. Buckland, do you have any comment on that before we go forward?
No comment.
All right. Mr. Turner, Commissioner?
No comment.
All right.
I think they need to come back as a major modification, and I think we need to look real hard at...
Let's do one thing at a time. Let's vote on the modification. Any motions somebody would like to make?
I make a motion that the applicant return to us with a full application as a major modification and a set of plans ready for us to look at, and all their ducks in order, so that we know that a year from now, they're not going to be saying, "The contractor got held up on another job, and his bulldozer has a leaky rear main seal, and..."
All right. Any discussion on the motion?
I wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm looking through the prints that were online, and I don't, I don't see any, you didn't make any change on the prints. You're just saying, which floor? Are you getting rid of the existing third floor and dropping that down to the second floor?
The existing fourth floor.
Well, you still got the, from what I look on here, you've got your solarium, and you've still got the tower, right? The tower's the lobby that's next to it? So I'm just trying to figure out how you're dropping this down, if you're keeping the solarium.
He was four stories, Richard, and the solarium. Now he's doing three stories.
Yeah, so what story is he getting rid of? Is he getting, so you're, you're getting, I know you're getting rid of the top one, but the way it looks to me is that you're still carrying the tower also with the solarium. Isn't that what you said?
The solarium floor was the fifth level. It might be easier to understand if it's levels. So the first level would be the first floor. The second floor, third floor, and fourth floor are full floors. The fifth level was the solarium.
Oh, I see. All right.
It's a half, it's not even a half.
Clarified now. Sorry about that.
That's okay. It's like a layer cake. We just took off the fourth floor. We sliced it off.
And then, I thought there was some discussion earlier, I mean, the first time you came through, there was a kitchen in here for people to be cooking their own food and whatnot, and now I see it removed. Is that another part of the changes that you got rid of?
Each unit's going to have their own kitchen, right?
Each unit has their own kitchen.
I thought in the beginning, you had one, there was a gathering lobby area with a kitchen connection to it. I'm looking at the floor plan, and I'm not seeing it. It just says lobby and active area. It doesn't say anything, show the kitchen in there or anything.
No, Mr. Semple, the kitchen would be removed, and the dining room would be removed. The dining room is a feature that...
So that's another change that we're going through?
Yeah, COVID, people are afraid of dining rooms.
That's fine. You answered it, yep.
That would come out. So we called it activity. We don't know what it would be. Sometimes in elderly housing, elderly housing is, again, something that, people need it, but they don't need a commissary. They can do their own, they can stay in their own units. The difference here that we would propose, and we, I don't want to get into...
I guess we're drifting away from the motion, so let's, we need, so we have a motion by Mr. Akabachi. It's a major modification. Do I have a second? And/or discussion from the board?
Well, I'd like to say that I, myself, wouldn't recommend that the applicant come back with full plans and everything for what they would like to do with the 60 units, because that's a, I don't, that's a very big variance. I wouldn't be inclined to give it to you. I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but 60, I thought the project that you had was way too big for that location. Having 60 apartments on two acres is, again, way too big for two acres, and I would not be going for it. I don't know if anybody else would, but I don't want you to come here if everybody's going to not be for it. I don't know what the rest of the board feels. That's what I feel. So my motion would not, I would not agree with the motion to have you come back, but I would agree that it's a major modification.
All right, so we have a second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye. Veronica?
I didn't second it.
She didn't second it?
I'm sorry. Do I have a second on the major modification that Jim said?
I'll second that.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye. Veronica?
No.
That's a major. You want to say it's a major or...
But he's saying...
If you say no, you agree. It's a minor, so you got a pick.
Okay, okay, yes, yes. No, I do agree it's a major modification.
Okay. So Caesar, yes. Jim?
Yay.
Major. Jake?
Sorry, yes.
Yes. Richard?
Yay.
And myself, yes. So it's a major. Now, going back to an extension, when's the permit expired, on December?
Yes, it's December.
So you got three months left. What's the board wishes? How much extension they want to give?
Well, let's find out if an extension's even in order. Let's, I'm still not sure. You know, I'm looking here, and it says minimum lot area, square feet, commercial strip, one family, two-family, other. I mean, again, going back to Veronica's point, I think there's a big issue here with this not being what was permitted, and I think that all you need is one neighbor to go and challenge, even if we said, "Yeah, sure." All you need is one neighbor to say, "I'm challenging this in court." And there's another year, year and a half, and all you need is one dissenting person to go hire a lawyer. This isn't going to pass. I don't think this would pass a challenge in a superior court because of the number of square feet necessary to have 61 family dwellings. I think if you had 61 family dwellings, you'd have many acres of land, not two acres of land, so... I hate to see you spend a lot of money on an architect and an engineer and come back and get shut down. I'm kind of hearing what Veronica's saying.
Yeah, if I could just speak to, so it's a question of density that you're concerned about. I would point out that the Woodland Cove project has a density of over 20 units per acre, so there's this precedent, and you'll recall, some of us weren't happy about that.
Is that a 40B project?
That was a 40B.
Is this?
No.
Not at this time.
No, intermediate care was a special permit.
Intermediate care was not. That's not 40B, anyway. But to come back and look for senior apartments, potentially, it could be 40B. Via the Lip process, we would want to do it cooperatively and not, you know, come in...
Well, you might, you might be more successful going the 40B route, I guess, is what I'm in, without, I didn't come right out and say it, but now I am.
Yeah. That's been suggested as an alternative, yes.
Trying to hint at it, but...
Yeah.
As a 40B project, we'd have a whole different set of eyes on this project. As a, as a, this is an apartment at Wareham, Crossroads Apartments at Wareham, as a 60-unit apartment building, you've got a whole different set of eyes looking at this plan from a whole different set of criteria and bylaws. You know, it's definitely a major modification. Definitely, this board approved of a facility that would give nursing and care to people that are on the end of their life. And this is now an apartment building, and it could be 55-year-olds, and gee, 55-year-olds can live another 40, 50 years.
I don't think there's any...
So, you know, it's just not, I don't know, I don't, you know, I just, I'm just, I don't want you to run out of here saying, "Yeah, these guys are going to be easy," because I know I'm not, and I'm not against you. I like senior living. I like assisted living. I like the original project. This modification to the project, I got to admit, I don't think the town's going to be very receptive to it.
I guess, if I may, again, to do the original project, I, my opinion, was if it was a minor modification, and you...
We've already decided it's not minor, so you can stop uttering the word minor, because you can't drill it into our heads. We've voted...
I'm not trying to drill into your head. I'm saying...
Let's go to the extension. I mean, we're not going to beat a dead horse. Let's get into the extension.
The requested path would be faster, that's all. Anything that we provide, even doing the original project, it's going to be very difficult to do the original project because of, again, there's been a big delay because of COVID. Can't blame everything on COVID. But take a year away. I got, I have two years normally. This, I'm lucky I have now eight, nine months, 10 months. If I had a year, we could probably come back with the original project and do it. I'd be able to, I'd be able to say something. My gun is to my head because of the time. This would be something that we could do faster and easier. However, if the board, we'd like to come back to do a major modification to see if we could do something that's viable. We could, I'm still pursuing the original. I haven't given up on it. I agree with you. It was a great idea. It's a great concept. I need more time. That's why we're asking for a year, not asking for two more years. I'm asking for a year to replace the year that everybody has lost.
All right. Can you get a motion on an extension for a year?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for a year.
For a year extension. Do I have a second on Jake's motion?
On top, can I say anything?
Yes.
On top of that, I mean, we did, he was here for, I think, over a year, coming back and forth, and he was, you know, very helpful in on the process, so I don't think a year would be too much to give him.
All right. So motion by Jake. Do I have a second?
I'll second it if it's conditional that they understand that we're extending a assisted living facility. We're not extending...
Intermediate.
Intermediate care facility.
Right, right. We're extending the permit, so...
You're extending the existing permit. We understand what the confines are there, so...
Okay. I'll second it under those conditions.
Second by Jim. All in favor, say aye. Veronica?
And aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So you got a year. Hopefully, you could get your financing together, or you want to approach another approach, see what you could do.
We'll consider everything that we have heard tonight.
All right, very well. Thank you.
We appreciate the board's candor.
No problem. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to continue public hearing, 11:23. Peter Colores for 3127 Cranberry Highway.
You guys want to give me back those tiny packages? Sorry, guys, I got a, I got a toad in my throat. The frog's... Oh, thank you.
Do you have extra plans?
All right, council of public hearings still open. Name an address.
Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street. We have some plans. Mr. Madden can pass those out if you don't have them.
Yep.
Full package is a site plan. Should have been circulated, so you could see it electronically.
Thank you. How you doing?
All right, councilor, it's yours.
Yeah, sure. So last time we were here, we were here in June, and we presented this project for a variance, which was preliminary. The board had thought that it would be granted if we went through the site plan review to review the drainage. The other items here, if you recall, this is Pete Colores, he owns Master Muffler over there on Cranberry Highway, and he has that other lot, and looking to build, building a modest building on this lot for the idea of a service center, right? Mr. Colores is very, has been around for quite a while, and he serves a lot of town in Wareham, including the police, fire, so he's a busy business. And so we thought it pertinent to do the site plan. I will say, we just received today the response letter from our peer review engineer, so, you know, today being very tight to get a response back this afternoon. So, which is okay, but, you know, having a little bit more time would have been great. So Mr. Madden is here, and he is prepared to go through that. It looked, in our opinion, minor comments regarding the plans and clerical things. And there's, so if we have the time, we'd like to go through that, so you can take a look, or if we want to just hear from the board, however you want, you would like to do it.
I did read the comments this afternoon quick. They all sound legit. I don't know how Mr. Madden is going to address this matter. So, did any board read the comments from Phil?
I went through them so quick that I think they made more questions than resolved any questions for me.
Okay. Well, anyone else had read this?
I didn't get a chance to, so...
I have, just to get my head back into this, if you don't mind. I absolutely know where this is, but I can't remember.
Next to the kitchen, please.
Okay. This is the parking lot next to Thomas Michael's. And they have frontage on Cranberry Highway?
There's a curb cut already there on that side.
I guess what's got my question going, what's got me perplexed here is that when I read the peer response, I think I saw something about lack of frontage and how we...
We already granted the variance, didn't we?
Yeah, so back in June, he did mention the variance piece of it, which is fine. I don't necessarily agree with some of the comments, but regarding that, you know, self-imposed hardship and things like that, but that was why we went through peer review, right? We wouldn't go spend all this money on the plans if we didn't think, that's what we started with.
Right. We all agreed on the variance pending...
Yeah, that's why I said I'm, you know, I didn't get a chance to read it well enough to, so I got to ask.
For them to go for a site then.
Absolutely. It's fine, and it's just one of those that kind of was fresh, I mean, the client's been great, but it's just taken so long to get some sort of response. But I think it would be helpful for Mr. Madden to go through those items. He was able, again, there's no formal response. We have had cases before where if you, you know, we're going to make the changes and things like that, you can look at the site plan preliminary, accept it, and vote yes, and then conditionally that you see the changes that we're commenting on.
Right. Mr. Madden, I guess we're not going to discuss the variance request on his comment, on Mr. Phillips' comment? So we're going to, because we get settled on that variance, so we're going to jump to the site plan and drainage calculation, as well as the, as well as the, yeah, all these 17 items. I did read them, so let's hear it from you.
Okay, do you want to just briefly go over the plan set as it relates to these items? You want to just hit these items? What are your preferences as far as me?
Do we have that letter?
Yeah, it's on the computer.
It's on the computer. We don't have a hard copy. You've got it in your email.
You can go through the plan. Do you agree with what he wrote? Did you read it?
Yes, I did. I read it, and I have some preliminary comments on it. I tend to agree with your initial take on it. They aren't terribly onerous, and I think most of them are easily resolved.
Do you agree with the drainage calculation he's saying, and the grading? You agree with the...
I don't necessarily agree with the grading, but, you know, we'll gladly accommodate it with the plan. I think that the plan can be changed to accommodate the very, very minor concerns. I think that the major one that I have, as he said, about creating the low point on the west side of the property. But if you look at your existing conditions plan, I believe it's sheet number three, there's a catch basin right over there, and the low point is actually on our lot. We have an existing catch basin there.
The catch basin on the highway, you mean?
No, no, on the, on the site itself.
On the existing leaching basin. See note five or six here. I get it. See it right here?
Yeah, okay.
So in our existing conditions plan, there's an existing catch basin there that goes to an undetermined leaching pit. The one that Phil was talking about in his review letter was this area over there. He said, we're creating a low point with no drainage. But if you look on the existing conditions plan, there is a catch basin on the adjoining property that is actually at the low point. So Phil's plan, I think, was referring to the drainage drawing that we have. And it, drainage plan doesn't include this. Existing conditions does. But a review of the topography around there indicates that everything does flow to that rim on that catch basin. That rim's at elevation 40. Our grades are 41, 3, 41, 1, 41, 3, you know, 41, 2. So everything does run in this area. There's a 41 contour there and a 41 contour here. And we just have a low, this is a low spot on our site.
What's the elevation there?
Pardon me?
What's the elevation on your site?
On our site here? 40.
Okay. All right. So what's the deal with that steel curb?
What we were trying to do with the steel edging? The steel edging was on the outside edge because we have those, you asked us to provide some pretty detailed and complete landscaping for the site. So when we mulch these planting beds on our, on our site, we wanted to provide a means to keep the mulch on the property. So we thought the steel edging might work out in that instance. So the steel edging is on the outside edge of the property line. The mulch bed would butt up against it. We'd have four inches of exposure on the steel edging. The steel edging is 18 inches deep. So we would have roughly, you know, a foot driven into the ground. So it'd be pretty.
Why wouldn't use concrete curb or granite curb?
Concrete curb on the inside of our, of our parking lot. So we were able to separate all of our site drainage from this thin band of landscape. And I suppose if we wanted to change the, you know, the mulch to another material, that might be something to consider. But we felt that it was reasonable to use that edging, you know, with the issue with plowing and what have you. I don't, I look at it as a reasonably solid edge to, to put your plow against.
Yeah.
And to, and wouldn't, shouldn't cause a problem with plowing. But, you know, that's.
It depends how thick it is. If it's a quarter inch, the plow going to push it out unless.
Well, unless he holds a couple inches off the edge of it, he does, you know, he needs to push his snow there. He can't put it on our property. You know, we can plow our lot with the, with the curb, do a tighter job and push most of our snow into areas on that landscape and in the, in the rear of the, in the rear of the site.
Okay. And then he talks about the TSS calculation.
In the drainage calculation, we provided the cut sheet from that water quality unit. Now, water quality unit for the CFS flow rate that we have going to it has an 80% TSS removal. Before we discharge into an underground infiltration basin, we're only, we're required due to these soils to have a 44% TSS removal rate. So I think in his letter, he says that typically these water quality units are approved for up to 50% in, without testing. He was saying that we had to justify our 80. But the document that's included with the drainage calc is the cut sheet that does speak directly to the, to the, to the flow rate and the ability to remove 80% of TSS. So, I mean, you know, if we're dumping, if we're dumping water with 44% TSS removal into the, into an infiltration basin, I mean, where's the TSS going? We're not going to a surface body. We're not going to a wetland. We're not going to overland flow. We're going to infiltration.
Right. Well, regardless, this is something we can give you a relief on. That's, that's, that's not our jurisdiction. You have, you and him has to work it out. That's a DEP regulation that we cannot waive.
We think it's worked out. And we think that the document that he's asking for is included in the drainage calc.
It's fine as long as he says it's okay. I know he just wrote this letter. Maybe you show him what you have.
We haven't had a chance.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'll check with him on that, sure.
All right. Now going also back to the, to the architecture plans. Do we have a architecture plans on that? Or are you still working on it?
An elevation.
Elevation.
Don't have an elevation.
Okay. Landscaping architect, as he mentioned.
Landscape. He was talking about meeting the, the architectural requirements for the CS district that's in, in the bylaw.
Right. It requires a landscaping architect stamp.
Well, yeah, it does. But, I mean, I think that if you look at the way, you know, the way the bylaw is written, it says that a non-residential project.
Project.
Over 5,000 square feet. So it doesn't state whether it's the entire lot. I think that might be what they're talking about. But this building's 1,400 square feet. So it doesn't rise to that 5,000 in, if you're viewing it from that point of view. Certainly it's a lot that exceeds 5,000 square feet. But what's the intent of the bylaw? Silent on that? Doesn't say whether it's the structure? Doesn't say whether it's the site? Doesn't say whether it's a combination of both? So.
Well, we're not going to think it. I mean, every commercial project comes before us. We ask them for a landscaping architect. We're going to be fair to everyone else. But I personally request.
It's not an issue.
You know, I mean, every project we ask one, if it's not in the bylaw.
Right.
It depends how you read the bylaw. I personally think we should have, I mean, you should extend, I mean, the applicant should be extended to us since we were kind to give him a variance for that. So it's, it's a small thing to ask for.
Right. Like I think when we did Swenson Granite across the street, we had landscape architect to do it in this, this landscape.
And their building is only 900 square feet.
That little building. But the site was substantially larger.
I know, but you say.
And it contradicts what I was just saying. Right.
Exactly.
Right.
So landscaping, also we have imperious, you are at 65.9. You might need a little variance on that, which I don't see a problem personally. I'm going to run into the board. I'm just going to run my questions quick and see what.
In his letter, he states that the, the bylaw says 60%. We need to change the plan. I think 623 of your bylaw under the CS zoning district for non-residential use states 65. So I don't know where 60 came from. We have 65 noted on our plan. The project is 65.9%. So it's less than 1% over what it is. So perhaps we just cut out enough bituminous in that area on that site so that we can achieve the 65.
Can you find that discrepancy on the, not tonight, about the 65 and the 60%? So we know which, how much variance we're given? Are we given 0.9 or are we given 5.9%? So that's another thing. So the calculation you're going to work, also he needs a PLS stamp?
No problem.
No problem.
Do that.
Okay, go, the sign?
Signage.
Signage.
Something to follow like it has in other projects.
So you need a variance for that?
It's not part of this.
Yeah, the goal was to do a sign that's compliant with zoning.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. And if not, we'll go through the process.
All right. DOT, I guess we'll find out soon enough when you file with the state.
Yeah, he was talking about these, these burns right here. But once again, you know, due to our past experience with DOT on a like type project, we have those burns on Swenson Granite as well. So his site for the DOT issue, we know from our experience that it gets approved.
Right, because they don't want that water going on the highway.
Well, absolutely. We can't put it on the highway. I think he's talking about the small, the small area there.
Yeah. All right. Okay, these are, okay, another thing. The 150 foot without provision of fire apparatus turned around. What's that? Because apparently if you mention this, we're going to, fire department going to ask about it. So what's the deal with that?
Well, he's stating that the NFPA regulations requires fire department apparatus turnaround shown on the plan if that driveway is more than 150 feet. So I don't know without talking to him what he's talking about. Certainly more than 150 feet to the back of the site. But, you know, we're, I'm pretty sure we're able to at least come in there, drive and do a three-point turn and get in and get out. It's accessible on each side of the property currently. I mean, granted, things can change over time. But this is all impervious on each side, wide open, so.
The sign.
I think we can accommodate.
Right, we need to address this with the fire department. All right, these are my questions. Start by Troy. What do you have for questions?
I don't have any questions.
Veronica.
No comments.
Jimmy.
Nope.
Jake.
No comments.
Rich.
No comment.
All right. Anyone on the public want to speak on or against this project? Online, anything? Commissioner, anything you want to add?
No comment.
Mr. Buckland?
No comment.
All right. So I guess the right way to do, let's talk to Phil, coordinate with Phil from, what's the name of that company? Allen.
Major.
A and M.
Allen Major?
Yeah.
Allen, the major, yeah. So I guess coordinate with them and as long as you, both party agrees, seems that we're good to go.
Yeah, I don't, you know, like I say, we, we view.
I know, it came in late. I mean, I came from work, I read it quick and, and I'm glad I read it. So we make sure we're all on the same page, kind of. And you need some facades for next time.
Need some what? Architecture?
Yeah, at least facades, you know?
Yeah. And as far as the parking, the new parking requirement, right, for overhead garage doors, I think that the bylaw changed to five spaces per, per bay door. We have 14 on this site. Work is shown subject parcel. You know, they, also in his letter, he talked about what happens off-site down here on the opposite property. You know, it's really not much of our concern. We're dealing only with what, what we own.
Now, the bank is the, the track, right?
Yes.
There's no, there's no setback from track in Wareham, right? Or our bylaws, there's no setback. You could go right, no, you could go right on the property line.
But I think his issue was there's some bituminous that cuts in, comes out and, you know, there might be on the budding property line, there might be some residual pavement that's kind of shabby after we saw cut and take ours away. And I think that was his question, what is the disposition there?
You'll address this on-site when you work and your contractor will address it. All right, so work with them. Let's try to work these things out. How much time you think you need, councilor?
September 13.
Anything before?
I'm good with September 13.
You guys, Mr. Madden, you good?
Yeah, that'll be fine with me, sure.
All right, so let's, like I said, let's try, hopefully we could wrap it up if we could get all these things in order. Can I have a motion to continue?
So may.
We have a motion with Mr., from Ms. Akabachi to continue. Which one is this one? 11-23 till September 13. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Well, Jake, you went for the, he's voting on distance and started, so.
Yep.
So you're not on that. Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazia, aye. So that's Mr. Troy Larson voting for.
Yep.
Because he was there for the first, for the opening. So, and myself, Nazia, aye. So I guess we see on the 13 and hopefully we could wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Have a good night. All right, we go to public hearing 30-23 Wareham Fire District for 271 Main Street.
I don't know if there's anybody here for that.
Yeah, Mr. Andy.
Okay.
First time ever. This is interesting.
You've never been to one of those?
Never been to a zoning board.
Going to get raped.
My wife.
So, so just so you understand, I've told other people this, so you might as well know too.
You got to do the dance.
If we've been nice to everybody else and you're the last one, we have.
Right, thanks, man.
You're out of good fortune.
We have, we're, yeah, we have to be nasty.
And you have to do a dance.
You don't want to see me dance.
All right.
So let me, let me pull that folder out and get this.
We'll walk you right through it. Just bear with us.
Let me, let me have, you want to take it home and read it? It's going to help you sleep tonight. Back in the days of wood fireplaces, this was a great starter material, you know? Wood, a wood stove. I learned this recently. A wood stove is dirtier than a coal stove.
Is that right?
I had to believe, huh?
And, and where did you get?
In the environment, not in your house. Your house doesn't like coal very much because of where it burns.
Oh, yeah. What's the source?
I can't, I wish I could, I wish I could remember the source. Because, you know, I was online and I was reading, you know, about pollution and.
I'm going to look that up.
Solar electricity. Yeah, look it up.
I have a wood slash coal stove that I use and I.
Yeah, and you start out with wood and then you throw coal on top of it and the coal is actually burning cleaner into the environment. Generation should, it's a generation plant that I was reading about. So I was shocked to read it. Like, are you kidding? I used to sell wood, you know? Thinking that it was environmentally, you know.
Does that apply to the wood pellets?
I didn't get, you know, I shouldn't make these statements. I didn't do enough looking into it, but I would think the pellet would be.
I mean, the bags there, they're like 90% heat efficient.
Yeah. And the, and the stoves that burn them are super efficient. They have the secondary burner and all that crap. Oh, I need to read, sorry, I have to read this in before we can, yep. I was just killing time. I was getting the paper. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 23rd, 2023 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition number 30-23 for a variance from the requirements of Article 11, Section 1160, 1162, and 1172, Paragraph 2, Note 3, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Wareham Fire District of 2550 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. Seeking to add two-sided digital message display sign at 271 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. That appears on the assessors map 47, Lot 1151 in the Wareham Village 1 zoning district.
Go ahead, sir. A dance first.
The dance.
You missed it already.
Yeah, okay. You have to state your name and address for the record.
Home address?
No, you're, who you represent.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Andrew Cunningham, the Wareham Fire District, 2550 Cranberry Highway.
All right, just tell us what's your plan, what's the deal here?
So, I, we started working with Scoreboard Enterprises to come up with a proposed messaging board for either the water department office location or the downtown fire station. And the two board, the two boards, being the water commissioners and the prudential committee members of the district, voted to go after a proposal for the fire station instead, thinking they would get more public notice there, more, more eyes on the sign than you would on Cranberry Highway. Traffic going by a little slower, you'd have a little more time to see it. And so, so we proposed the fire station. I don't know this for fact, but we were aware of the minimum 25 square feet in the beginning and I talked to Paul long before we even had a board under agreement. I don't know if Scoreboard didn't understand the bylaw exactly when they sent the application in, because they literally proposed a 26-square-foot message board. Now, the display itself is smaller, the display is actually only about 21.6, it's under 22 square feet, but the outside diameter brings you up to 26, 26.04 to be exact.
Probably wanted to see you dance, but go ahead.
So it's, so it is one square foot too big per the bylaw.
But, it's saying, Commissioner, just correct me. You're saying it's 26.04 square feet over the allowed 25 square feet?
No, no, in total. If you, in your packet, you have this picture here with the dimensions right on it?
What, what size is allowed on Main Street? 25 square feet or 50?
25 feet per side.
Per side?
Sign calculated out to 26.04 per side.
Oh, okay, so, all right, very good.
So he's- It's a little over one foot, square feet.
Okay, 1.04 square feet, all right. And what's that used for, for alerts or pay you well?
It's gonna be for a public display of messages for flushing, you know, heaven forbid a boil water order.
I've been accused of a few public displays.
Elections, you know, drought declarations.
Now-
Whatever might come up, you know.
Public service announcement.
Yeah, yeah. And so far-
Placed within the set properly from setback, are they placing that?
No issues with the setback.
The setback, okay. All right, very well. Start by Troy, what do you think?
I don't really have a problem.
Veronica?
I have no problem with it.
Jimmy?
No, I had no questions, no problems.
Jake?
This is okay with me.
Rich?
So we're proposing a neon flashing sign to go in front of the-
So it's not flashing, it is an electronic display sign, but we'll not be flashing.
So it's not gonna change?
No, it will toggle through different displays, as many displays as you put up on the real.
So that's, so that's not gonna consider it a flash at all?
No, I do not consider that.
Well, you don't, you don't.
I don't, I don't think Paul does either.
So, so the center of town, we're just gonna start just letting all flashing lights go? We said that the emergency room was all right up there in the top, as long as it wasn't on, what, certain hours or wasn't as bright or, we're gonna just start approving?
No, but if I may-
If we're gonna start approving flashing signs in the center of town?
No, what he's saying, that will display, okay, tomorrow.
I know what it's gonna, it's gonna be just like the town hall one, but only smaller. It's gonna have just announcements on it, right?
Right.
It is very similar, very similar to the one right out front here.
So-
Very similar.
Is there hours that that, is there hours that should, it shouldn't be on?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So-
And that can be any hours you deem appropriate. It can go dark at any time, it's ultra grammable.
At one point, the town was trying to make it look all nice and cozy and cute and now we're gonna start throwing signs that are lit up in the sound, in the center of town. So I'm really not for it, but that's just my opinion. And I'm done.
Let me ask the Commissioner a question. If that, if it was 25 square feet, is it allowed?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess, Richard, that it's allowed regardless if he was a square foot smaller. So we're not giving him a variance for the-
So he wouldn't be here, he wouldn't be here, right?
Right, but he's not here for the flashing thing.
I know, but I'm against the flashing thing, so that's all, that's all, yeah.
Well, there's some-
Whether it changes, whether it sits five minutes and then changes, it's considered a flash in my eyes.
Right, but that's something-
That's fine.
Yeah, no, no, but let me-
When you get to be your age, five minutes is a flash.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but let me, let me say something. That's something maybe we should consider to change on the bylaw, maybe we should discuss with the Commissioner and try to change the bylaw for the future. Something, you know, we put, we write down like every problem we encounter and try to change it for the future.
Well, if I'm hearing Richard correctly, he doesn't want to change the bylaw, he wants to enforce it. Am I, you're saying you like it the way it is?
I agree with what you're saying in terms of, you know, not wanting the lights, because it's not really in, doesn't really fit into the idea of what Main Street was gonna be.
Well.
However, I have, I look at what the reason for the sign is the public good of the entire town. It's not, it's not Joe's advertising their sale of merchandise or something else. I do think that it's a good way to inform the citizens of what's happening and I can't think of a really much better way to do it than somebody being able to drive by and see the sign.
Yeah, and I think it looks better over in the water department in my eyes, too, so.
Why you didn't put it on the water department?
Uh, mainly for the reason that people are driving by at a faster rate, so we think they would have less time to see it. We think we would hit the more, and again, Cranberry Highway, sometimes it's just people passing through town, they're not even the Wareham residents. People who are downtown are downtown because they live in town more than likely, they're the ones who we need to know.
Our population goes up about 40 to 50 crabbing.
Or doubles, yeah.
They're not from around here.
Yeah, yeah, my water demand doubles between winter and summer, so that's, that's an absolute truth.
Commissioner, you were saying something? Did you, Commissioner, did you want to say?
No, I'm good now.
Well, we have no problems with any limitations that you want to assign to this, an hour that it must go dark on, a length of time that any one single display can be on and not off, you know, I wouldn't, you need a little bit of time just to read it anyways.
How nice can we get it to look? Can we get it to look a little bit less utilitarian, I guess, to fit with the feel of what downtown is supposed to be?
It's interesting.
I mean, you could probably make a little bit nicer footing underneath it, that would, I mean, this is what, this is what it looks like up on a couple of stairs.
Right, so like the-
Can't change that by much.
Picture frame or, I don't know.
A frame around this existing frame? That would make it bigger.
Well, could that look like wood rather than metal? You know, can the base be like a wood, so that it's just looks like a warmer spot or less-
I was thinking brick. The building is brick already, a brick footing around the base of it would match the building.
Could I say something real quick, sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I know you, they could put it there, you know, if it was a little bit smaller, but I do think the center of town is probably not the best spot for it, because even though you're going slower, there's more foot traffic, there's people crossing the road a lot, and you know, when you're not paying attention for one second to look up at the board, there's a crosswalks and stuff right there, so that would be a concern. So I think it would be a better spot over by the water department, people are going a little bit faster, longer, you see a little bit more in the distance and there's no crosswalk. So I don't think the area, I agree with the area, but like I said, it's off a foot, so they can put it there regardless, so I'm okay with them going over, over a foot. That's all.
Just a clarification on that, Commissioner. It says that the sign, the reason that it's not allowed is not just the size, but because it is electronic.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So it's not by right?
Oh, it's not?
No.
Not by right.
If it's 25, they still would have to come here because it's a-
Okay, so I was just misinformed then. So I don't really like that in the center of town, because it is a spot, you know? My dad was actually hit by a car when he was a young kid there, right in that area, so it's just kind of a, you know, sensitive area.
Anyone online want to speak of favor against that? You didn't install it yet, did you?
Okay. So, I get it, I mean, if you, if you go in a dark room at night with your TV on and you're watching a TV show and then the cold screen goes black and then something else comes on, boom, it is, it's a big flood, you know? It can be, it can be abrupt, so it can be. Let me preface what I'm saying is, I'm not so opposed to the sign, but I'm hearing the reasons that people are opposed and I'm saying I'm able to understand it. I wonder if you went back to the prudential committee and the guys and said, look, you know, I don't think the board's so opposed to us having a sign, public notice is a great, but maybe we ought to put them over. Is that where the water department is? Is that the headquarters? Is that the address?
No, this is the downtown fire station.
No, 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 the, the address of the fire department, when you guys give your-
My address that I announced is the water department.
Is the water department?
Yes.
Over there, the, the building that's kind of like downgrading.
Yeah, across from the nursing home, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that was the alternate location?
It was, it was the second suggested alternate location, yes.
Just as a straw, straw vote amongst the board here, I'm listening to everybody and I think I heard that they, the board would be more receptive to seeing it over there, despite the wisdom of the prudential board and the, what are the two?
There's the three-member board of water commissioners and then there's a five-member prudential committee.
Andy, let me, let me explain to you how it works. In this board, you need four out of five votes, so four of us have to say yes.
Okay.
Apparently, there's two members. I mean, I'm for it, I don't have a problem, Veronica's for it, Jimmy's for it, Troy can vote on it, and apparently Jake doesn't seem-
I'm not, I'm still not decided, you know?
He's not decided, but I'm just giving, we could go-
I think both locations have pros and cons.
I'm not sure, I do, I did actually think about pedestrian traffic and the fact that that's already tightened there sometimes and if they're gonna bump up the sidewalks any further, like if it's right there, if you're not gonna, it's, I'm not entirely-
I'm just explaining procedure for him, so you need four out of five.
Okay.
We could pull the vote and it is what it is. If it doesn't work, you have the right to appeal it, that's a long process, I don't think your community wants it, and if not, you could go Cranberry Highway and come back before us and I think it should be fine. Or we could make another vote after that, that will grant it to you on that, I guess.
On the alternate location?
I just, I would vote for it to be on Cranberry Highway.
You would vote in favor?
But I'm not voting for it for in the center of town.
All right.
I just do not think-
How about you, Jake?
I know it's a good thing, I agree that it's a good thing for public notice, don't get me wrong. I'm not an a-sayer, I am, I'm all set with, I'm good with improvements and changes, but the center of town isn't a place for a flashing, a sign that changes, the colors can be, we could sit here and beat it to death over the thing, but I just, bottom line is, I don't think the center of town is a place for that type of sign.
Commissioner, does he need a variance or special permit on Cranberry Highway?
Actually, you can make the sign twice as big.
It can be twice the size.
Okay. He already has the sign. Be 50 square feet per side. You'd still have to come ahead because it's gonna be digital. You would still have to come to the board.
Again, even if you vote on the change of location tonight?
I'm not sure, I'm prejudiced, but it was advertised for Main Street, not Cranberry Highway.
I know.
We can be very crafty with our wording.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be fine if it was right there at my office, to be honest.
All right, so, all right, we had enough, let's move to close.
And I will admit that this has already been discussed.
Well, unfortunately. I don't know, I'd like to send, I don't know if I want to move to close, I think I, I think I'd like to send them back to the committee, the prudential, all those people that had their input, that the board gave a heads-up that we'll, we'll work with you on Cranberry Highway, but you're not gonna get it on Main Street, and let them feel as though that was their decision to switch it, rather than we imposed it upon them.
All right.
How do you feel? Would you like to be able to go back to them and say, I got the sign, but it's gotta be at the water department?
I'd feel fine with that, because there's no other third location. It's always gonna be one of the two.
Then why make the-
All right, the good idea.
We don't want to make you come back.
You just don't like-
We don't have to, okay.
Case one, there's only-
Why don't we do this? We send you, we continue the hearing, you go talk to the prudential committee, if they agree to go at the water department, you go see Sonia, Mr. Buckland, modify the application, don't pay again, that's fine, one-time payment, just re-advertise it with the right address and we'll see you then. How's that?
See, it's gonna be, the public notice went out to the people on Main Street.
Yeah.
And they had the right to come and say no. Now you gotta give all those sick people at the nursing home the chance to send their nurses over to picket the sign, you know?
Or the people in the nursing home who are gonna look out the window at it.
You gotta get Mark's, you know, Mark's towing there, they may be really, you know, they really may-
Mark just sold the towing business.
Because they keep such a neat place.
Did he sell?
He sold, he sold the auto business, he still owns the towing business.
He's no more mechanic, he's towing.
Yeah, now he just does.
And you want to go in there now? I made a mistake going in there.
Yeah, so that's the process, unfortunately.
So do, I understand, tell me if I understand this correctly, you're gonna vote in favor of an alternate location?
No, we're gonna continue, we're gonna continue the public hearing.
Do a second advertisement for the other new abilities?
No, you gotta go see your people, decide what you're gonna do. If they say yes, you could, if they say no, we still want to vote, you come back here and we'll vote yes or no. If they say, okay, we'll go on the water department side, you go to town, to Mr. Buckland's office, change the application, we won't make you pay another fee.
I believe they will say yes to the alternate location.
But they're gonna make you, they're gonna make you pay for the stamps.
The mailing, the mailing.
The planning department may supply the paper and the envelope, but they're gonna make you buy the stamps.
Right. So you have to pay for the mailing and advertising, maybe like a hundred bucks.
Okay.
All right, so let's continue.
Well, he's gonna have, how much time, when they mail, how much time do they need before?
Need 30 days.
30 days.
Need 30 days, at least.
You're not gonna be able to come back for at least 30 days if you went and talked to them tomorrow.
So work on your dance moves.
Sorry to make you dance like this, we really didn't, we were joking when we started.
So I think, yeah, the advertising gonna take time, so.
That's what's gonna screw up.
I think Wednesday, October 11.
Because we've got to give the-
You want to install it right away, don't you?
Want to get the ground.
I know.
Like before winter, yeah.
I, you know what, let's do the September 27, and if Sonia can get it, if you go see her tomorrow and she can get the advertising right away.
Yeah, I think I could speak for the two boards that if, if the first location was gonna get denied, they would just say, okay, we're gonna go with the other location no matter what.
Right, now-
There was never any third proposed location.
It's not the concern on time, the concern on time is-
Is the advertising to the new center of the board.
It has to be advertised and has to be 30 days' notice, that's where you, that's where you-
So if I went and saw, and I'm not even at work tomorrow, if I went and saw Sonia on Friday.
Right.
Would she have enough time to accommodate?
She'll know, she's the best person, she'll tell you how long it is.
Stop, stop, stop.
She's not there Friday.
They're not there on Fridays and Sonia's not there tomorrow or the next day either, I don't believe. You're screwed.
Or Mon, next Monday, you mean?
And Ken just left, yeah.
Yeah, she's not there, she told me she was leaving.
She's not, she's going, she's not gonna be in till next Monday. So you're screwed.
The upcoming Monday.
So his, his concern was breaking ground?
Yeah.
Can he have a verbal of some sort to break ground?
I think that if the fire button, board the hole, put the potion-
I mean, I don't, I don't think 30 days is gonna freeze, but eh, around here in New England, we never know.
You could always sign, you could always start digging early.
You can't put concrete, you can't put concrete, you can dig the hole, but you can't put concrete. The Commissioner will stop you.
I have a longer electrical run at my office than I do downtown at the fire station.
What's that?
I have a much longer electrical run, I need to bring power to the sign.
Well, you could dig the trench, get the power.
Yeah, so I gotta stock up my back and wad and get out to that front grass area.
All right, so why don't we, let's continue it till the 27.
27 of September?
September, and hopefully Sonia can get, if for some reason Sonia on Monday, the 28, she says, no way I could do this, all what you have to do, write the letter, give it to her for continuous, to continue until the 11, you don't have to show up on the 27 and we'll continue it to the 11.
You know, I'm gonna, Sonia's not the only one in that department, she's just the only one that gets anything done, so.
She was very helpful in this.
Oh, he's not here now, I can't give him a hat, so you can still go there tomorrow because there is an administrative assistant, they'll probably be able to get you going.
They won't even be in Wareham tomorrow.
They won't even be in Wareham?
Yeah, I'm not back in Wareham till Friday now.
All right, so-
I'll go see you Monday, let's, let's.
Right, so let's, let's continue.
Continue.
I got to change my wording now.
September?
You know, I already.
What date, 13 or?
27.
September what?
27.
27. Do we need a motion and a vote?
Yes.
So moved, so we need a second?
Second.
Second, by all in favor to continue until 11:23, until September 27. Say aye. Okay, Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, continued until the 27, and we play it by ear.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Sonia Monday as well.
Okay.
I'll talk to you, we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
I'll try to give her a call tomorrow, see exactly how long it takes. She knows exactly what it takes.
Yeah, okay.
So you guys already have the sign?
No, we do not have a sign. What we have used in the past a little bit is shared the sign right out here in front of the town hall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Supposed some odd even-watering.
So, just out of curiosity, how much more would it cost you to double the size, now that you can?
So, part of the problem with that is, this sign has already been ordered. It's not been purchased, but it has been ordered, so it's already being made. With the expectation, we're limited to the 25, and that's why it's the size it is.
Yeah.
I, I don't see us trying to, you know, discontinue this order and try to order something larger, because we're now moving over to Cranberry Highway. I think this size is still.
You still think it's adequate, huh?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, six, six feet by four feet?
Just no more toting that sign up that says from May to.
You'd be surprised how small a sign looks.
October, odd and even-watering.
Yeah. You take a sheet of plywood from, you know, a sheet of plywood is, is 32 square feet.
Four by eight, yeah.
And, and I promise you, that looks like a small sign when you.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
You know, so, if this is just, this is just a personal, this has nothing to do with the board, or personally, if you guys could go back to whoever you're buying it from and say, "Hey, it's too late to make it 50 and muddle the cost," they may be happy to have the bigger.
They may be happy to sell something bigger.
You know, they may, you know, it's not like those signs sound in demand. If they haven't done a lot of work, I don't, I don't, I have no idea, but.
They've done a few. They just did one at the Middleboro High School, is theirs.
You know, you make a sign in your house, and you look at that, and you say, "Hey, I'm going to go welcome my good friend, you know, Donald Trump to Wareham." And then you stand up there, and it looks like you've got this posted stamp, you know? The signs, you'd be amazed how big they are.
What is the limitation of the size?
50 square feet.
50, you could go to doubles.
Double. Instead of five by five, you get five by 10.
First, first side again.
First side, yeah?
Yeah, five by 10, that's a good size.
Oh, that's big. Sounds big.
Sounds big, but, you know, go start looking at a few signs, and then, and then walk up to them with a tape measure, and your eyes are going to get big.
Anyway, can we make a motion?
So moved.
Hey, I just wanted to say.
The one over here is about the same size as where we're.
Make a motion to dismiss.
Just a little bit different.
I just wanted to.
This one's a little more rectangular, eyes a little more square.
You know, you guys, do whatever you, you know, I'm just.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll see you then. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Hey, I just, I just, I just wanted to say, I was confused on Mannix, because they said that they were getting rid of a floor, it was, it was, it used to be four stories. I didn't realize it was five stories it used to be. So that's why I was asking, when I was looking at the prints, it was four stories. I could have swore that he said, "We're getting rid of the fourth story" on it.
I thought he said that.
No, it is four, and he was getting rid of.
No, because it says that, it's, it's not what I'm looking at, it's not what I'm looking at.
I think it was just the drawing, I think they didn't change it.
I'm, I'm still confused that when he said.
Chopping the solarium on the fifth floor down to the fourth floor.
He's taking the, he's taking.
But I thought the building was fourth floor, I didn't know that it was fifth.
I thought it was four.
No, the solarium was its own, considered like a fifth.
And there was a little, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I was, so, I just want to clarify, that's why I was confused, because he said it was four, four stories, he was getting rid of one. So I thought it was going to be three stories, which I was even more happy that it was.
Right across from my office.
When he, when they said, "No, you're just getting rid of."
Right, right on.
I was confused what he said in the beginning. He said, "We're getting rid of a story, it's going to be four stories." I'm looking at, I'm like, I thought, I mean.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that we had five stories on it at the beginning.
It was four stories with a solarium, now it's three stories with a solarium.
Yeah.
It's across from that daycare on Sandwich Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's why.
Oh, across from Best Friends?
Next to Upper Cape Realty. That little office. Anyway, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second, by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, nazi aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you.